Okay, and we are live.
Okay. Per the State of California Executive Order N. twenty nine twenty, this meeting is being held telephonically. All public comment were received by either email or voicemail as noted in the agenda. Commissioners, if you would please mute your phones till called upon for comment or vote. Now I will let Chairperson White open the meeting. Thank you.
Okay, we will now call the meeting to order. A roll call?
Chairperson White?
Present.
Vice Chairperson Christensen?
Present.
Commissioner Wright?
Here.
Commissioner Hollinsworth?
Present.
Commissioner Nixon?
Here.
All members are present telephonically. Thank you.
Okay, well, we'll start with the pledge to the flag, and I will lead that. If you have a flag somewhere around to orient yourself. If not, just visualize the flag. So, hands over hearts. Okay. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Okay. Uh... Are there any oral or written communications per the State of California Executive Order N. dash two nine dash two zero? Or are there any public comments?
We did not receive any public comments via voicemail or email. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Okay, uh, so we will, uh... Go to item number two. Minutes for the Regular Planning Commission on April thirteenth. Are there any corrections, or is there a motion to approve?
Daryl motions approve.
Second, Kim.
Okay. Do I need to do a roll call on this?
Yes, please do a roll call. Sorry, Charles, that was...
Okay. Um... Okay, um... Chair, Vice Chairperson Christensen?
Yay.
Commissioner Wright?
Yay.
Commissioner Hollinsworth?
Yes.
Commissioner Nixon?
Yep.
And I vote yes. So, uh, it was unanimous. Okay, the, uh, next item is the Architectural Design and Site Plan Review Number two zero two zero dash oh five. Is that pronounced Bowie or Bowe, Boe?
I believe it's Boe.
I believe it's Boe.
Boe, okay. So, it's Boe Construction Incorporated. Adopted Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Tehachapi approving Architectural Design and Site Plan Review Number two zero two zero dash zero five, Boe Construction. Okay, uh, let's go to the staff report.
Okay, this is Kim, planning staff. This is my first staff presentation, so thank you, Jay. Um, I am going to start on page five of the PDF. Um, this project is ADN SPR twenty twenty oh five for Boe Contractors. Um, let's see. The project is, um, is the applicant requesting for approval to construct a thirty four hundred square foot office building on a point six one acre parcel, and this is on Bailey Court. Um, the project is categorically exempt from CEQA, so after the decision's been made, planning will be sending a notice of exemption to the county clerk's office. Moving on to page six of the PDF, we have here the project background and an excerpt out of the applicant letter. And then there is, at the bottom of the page, figure one, the project location on the west side of Bailey Court, south of Tehachapi Boulevard. Moving on to page seven. So, figure two here is the site plan for the office building. The property is currently zoned light industrial. It has a general plan land use designation, a freeway corridor. Um, the project site is surrounded by adaptive airspace to the north, RST cranes to the south, DC's RV center to the east, and a vacant parcel to the west. You can see in the table for development standards that the project does meet or exceed all of the building and fencing development standards for the M one zone. Moving on to page eight of the PDF. Um... Architectural elements.
Kim?
Yeah?
Kim, this is Kim Nixon. Our pages are numbered differently than yours.
Oh, okay. I'm going off of the Agenda PDF packet. So, what I'm looking at now is Agenda page eight, which is page four of the actual staff report. Does that make sense?
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah.
(laugh)
Just so everyone's in the same place, sorry.
Okay, no, it's okay. Okay, so architectural elements. The first submittal of, uh, from the applicant came in with what you see here in figure three and figure four. Um, the applicant proposed a craftsman-style building that has features like a gabled roof, some deep eaves, large windows, and river rock. Um, planning staff took, took a look at these, and we actually only had very minor comments. Um, one of them was to wrap the mansard roof around the front of the building. Um, and then the other one, I believe, was just to raise the parapet by, uh, I want to say six inches or so to screen the HVAC equipment that's on the roof. So, moving on to the next page, it actually did not take the applicant very long to come back with a resubmittal. So, in their resubmittal, um, we also asked them to tone down the tan colors and propose more of a, uh, of a muted earth tone palette. So, you can see on page nine of the PDF packet, um, in figures five and figure six, the applicant came back with colors that were more gray and earth tone. Um, they took out the stucco siding, um, per staff's request, and included now metal siding, metal roofing, and there's now stained wood finish, um, in the front there. The, uh, mansard does wrap around the sides, and the parapet is raised. Moving on to the next page, page ten, parking. Um, based on the square footage of the building and the use of the building, the required vehicular parking is eighteen stalls. You can see in figure seven where those parking stalls are. Um, because staff knew that there was going to be a future building B, uh, we actually calculated the required parking off of both Building A and Building B. So, that's how we came up with the eighteen. Eighteen parking spaces are proposed, so the site does meet parking requirements. Moving on to airport compatibility, we are on page eleven. Um, the project is within Zone B one of the Tehachapi Municipal Airport Compatibility Zone. Um, based on the point six one acres, this project does meet the density required. Um, the project is found to be consistent with the airport compatibility plan. The next two sections are signage and lighting. There is no signage plan here. There is no lighting plan here. The applicant will be conditioned to bring those plans in at a later date for approval. Now, we're on to page twelve of the PDF under landscaping. The applicant has proposed almost twenty percent of their property to be landscaped. That's actually almost twice as much than what we require in the M one zone of ten percent. Um, you will see in figure nine that they have plenty of landscaping, um, just to the east side of their building, up against Bailey Court. And in figure ten, the plant palette, which is consistent with our landscape design guidelines. Moving on to page thirteen of the PDF. Figure eleven shows the plant schedule, and staff will be conditioning the project to provide, um, trees, shrubs, and evergreens at our, or ground cover with the appropriate planting. Moving on to fences and screening. Um... Within this zone, chain link fencing, uh, within the setback is prohibited. Uh, fortunately, this project does not propose any fencing within the setback. The initial submittal did propose, uh, barbed wire at the top of the chain link. Um, in the set of staff comments, we encouraged the applicant to remove the barbed wire. Um, we don't think it's necessary here. And, uh, they came back with a revised submittal, taking out the barbed link. So, that was very, uh, very helpful. Um, and then screening, um... In figure thirteen, the applicant's initial submittal included a parapet at sixteen and a half feet elevation. So, with that, you can see the top of the, the rooftop HVAC equipment. Um, in the resubmittal, the parapet was raised up to seventeen feet six inches. That is now fully screened. Um, so at this time, staff finds that the, uh, with the project as modified, fencing and screening is considered appropriate. Um, moving on to pages fifteen and sixteen gets you into the required findings of the staff report. Um, staff will conclude with a recommendation that the Planning Commission, um, adopts a resolution for approval of AD SPR twenty twenty oh five, subject to the attached conditions of approval. And, uh, Jay and I are available for any questions.
Okay, great. Uh, were there any...? Thank you, Kim. Uh, it was, uh, a good staff report. Uh, do we have any public comments on this item?
We did not receive any public comments, uh, by email or voicemail.
Okay, well, we'll go now into commissioners' comments. Uh, we'll start with Vice Chairperson Christensen.
Thank you, Chairman White. I, I do have a couple of questions or, or, um, uncertainties with me. Um, it used to be when Bens was Bens, they would approve where the trash can location is. Is that done in-house now with us, or is somebody from Bens coming out and approving it?
That's done in-house.
Okay. Well, I did notice, I know they have a big parking lot there. Uh, I'm, I'm real keen on parking lots. They have a turnaround, a fire department turnaround, but if, I'm sure there's enough room to back U-turn a trash truck there, but I was looking at damage to their asphalt and everything else in that area. Uh, do you know if that was considered at all?
Um, you know, that was considered. Um, if everybody wants to look at page fourteen of the PDF, it's page ten on the staff report, figure twelve. Um, it's the, uh, figure that I'm looking at. It's for fencing, but you can see the asphalt and the turnaround. There's a hammerhead, um, at the back end of that property there so that the trucks could turn around and get back out.
Okay, I agree. Just kind of, I was worried about future damage. I mean, we've had that over at the, uh, Love's Truck Stop.
Oh.
At one point.
Gotcha.
So, okay. Uh, the other question is with staff, um, the, the elevations look incredible. Um, I don't, uh, I did not go by Bailey Court. Is this kind of consistent with the other properties around Bailey Court now?
It actually is, because there, um, I actually drove down Bailey Court a couple of weeks ago to take a look. Um, a lot of the buildings out there now have metal siding, and some have metal roofs. And so, this is right up that alley. In fact, I would say that it's even more enhanced and looks even better than the average building on Bailey Court.
Perfect. Uh, that, that's it for me right now. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Wright?
Uh, I have no questions. The, uh, the building with the adjustments looks great.
Okay, Commissioner Hollinsworth?
No, I agree. It looks very nice.
Commissioner Nixon?
Um, I, I think that the modified, um, part of the plan looks really good. It's, um, it is going to be a much better-looking building than most of what's out on Bailey Court at this point. Um, the only question that I have is, they've proposed a gate, um, in the plan right at where the trash cans are. And I know from our business and from our, um, personal home waste management isn't consistent with the times that they come and pick up. So, is that going to present a problem for them?
You know, I don't know. Um, I can, I can certainly give the applicant a call and ask them about it. Um...
Okay.
Maybe, yeah, maybe we can just clarify what the gate hours are going to be and, uh, confirm with them that it would be opened on expected pickup days.
Yeah, that way it may just, um, keep somebody from getting frustrated when it should be thought about ahead of time.
Right.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
So, that was, that was the only thing.
Okay, um, my only comment, uh, is just to echo what has already been stated several times. Uh, it's a very attractive building. I, uh, in the past, I think I've commented that I'd, I wish that some of those other buildings, uh, had a little more, uh, architectural integrity, but given the fact that it is, uh, pretty much an industrial complex, uh, you know, I, I, I think what's there looks great. But this particular building, uh, I think, in, and looking at the floor plan and the size of the conference rooms and whatever, I'm assuming they will be seeing clients here and making presentations, and I think they probably wanted to have a, um, a, a really good-looking building to show off, you know, their work, and I think, uh, they've achieved that. I'm, I'm very happy with the way it looks. Um, so that was, uh, that was my only comment. And at this point, I think we're ready, uh, to, uh... Uh, accept a, a motion. A motion to approve AD plus SPR two oh two oh dash oh five, Boe Construction.
Daryl move?
All second. This is Kim.
Okay, so now we'll, uh, take a roll call vote. Uh, Chairperson Christensen?
Aye.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Hollinsworth?
Yes.
Nixon?
Yeah.
And White, I vote yes. So, let the record show is unanimous vote for approval of AD and SPR two zero two zero dash oh five. Okay, um, we'll go into any Planning Commission announcements or reports now. Um, Vice President, Vice Chairperson Christensen, any comments?
Uh, just a couple. I'm, you know, these last, uh, two meetings like this has run very, very smooth. So, uh, hats off to, uh, staff and for Charles and you, you, without knowing how this was going to go, this has been very, very smooth. So, thank you guys for your help.
Yes, I, I agree. Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Wright?
Uh, no, I have nothing. It's, uh, it, it is smooth, but it's a nice meeting in person, too.
It is, yes. Okay. Uh, Commissioner Hollinsworth?
No, I don't have any comment.
Commissioner Nixon?
I have nothing.
Okay, my only comment, I wanted to inquire, uh, if there's been any updates since last month on the Sage Ranch update, uh, plan.
Uh, sure, I'll field that one. This is Jay. Um, uh, yes, we're still working through it. In fact, while you guys were doing this report, I'm following along and typing out an email at the same time. Um, and so, yes, we continue to work through the process on that. As you all know, the public, um, uh, hearing, uh, period for the draft EIR concluded last month. Um, our CEQA consultant is working on their response to comments, and, uh, we are still, uh, crunching through, you know, what is naturally a very, um, you know, sizable set of criteria and materials to present to you all with the final master plan. Um, so I don't, I can't firm a date for you when we'll bring it to the Planning Commission, but, uh, but there's eagerness on the part of the applicant to, um, to have us, uh, get there this summer, um, which I think is an achievable goal, but, uh, but we still have some, um, some sizable items to be reviewed and exchanged. Um, so, that's, uh, frankly, what Kim and I are spending quite a bit of our time on these days. So, um, that's probably the best, best update I could give you.
Okay, I, uh, uh, I don't know if you're at liberty to say, but, uh, the delays on this, are any of those, uh, due to the applicant? Or is most of this just due to the complexity of it and trying to deal with, uh, the limitations of, of coronavirus?
Sure. Uh, good question. The answer, I think, is complicated, uh, because it kind of depends on who you talk to. Um, Charles, it's, um, uh, we've had delays on this project associated with our own CEQA consultant, um, and just their busyness, um, not, not necessarily hitting all their scheduled timeline dates for that. We've also, uh, had some miscommunication issues between us and the developer about, uh, you know, who was doing what and when it was going to be due, kind of thing. Um, so those are just basic communication items. Uh, Corona has certainly, uh, impacted, um, our ability to process items over here. They have, they have claimed that it has cost them, uh, uh, time in terms of paying, um, invoices due to the city. Um, uh, so, I, I think it kind of depends on who you ask. I think there's a lot of, uh, a lot of different interpretations out there. I will say that, um, you know, we, there are three or four, and I, I, I'm just being careful, just so you all know. I'm only being careful because, um, I, I need to protect you all so that you're in a position to give an unbiased, um, you know, judgment of this item when it comes before you. So, that's really my only hesitation. Um, you know, but they've presented to us, um, draft design guidelines late last year. We've exchanged some items. I, I would even say that Trevor's exit from our staff and Kim's onboarding has probably contributed to some, um, delay on the project as, as we bring new personnel up to speed. Um, but they've given us that. They've given us information on the proposed HOA. They've given us, um, uh, information on, uh, water supply stuff that they want to talk about. Um, but we, we also, we, we just now got the tentative track map a little over a month ago. That takes a fair amount of time to size up. So, some of these items have, have been around in, in our orbit for several months now. Some of them we've only recently gotten. We have a few items that we've been asking for that we haven't yet gotten. Um, and so, uh, it, it's a bit of a fits and starts issue with us, um, in terms of we get some stuff, we work on it, and then, and then something interrupts it or they don't resubmit it, or, um, or we don't process something. So, uh, it's a complicated answer, and again, I think it kind of depends on who you ask. But we've got a lot of work in front of us now, and we're working on it actively. Um, and, uh, that's probably the most important thing, is we are, we are actively moving forward right now.
Okay, great. Uh, the, uh, reason for my asking is because the, I'm aware of a lot of that talk in the community from various sources, and I just, um, in trying to keep a clear mind, uh, as to, you know, where this is going and where, where the delays are coming from. I just wanted to get your viewpoint on that in a public forum.
Sure.
So, um, thank you for that.
Yeah, and you're welcome to, um, if you guys have any communication you're receiving from the applicant or from an outside third party, you're welcome to share those with us. I would also remind you that the city attorney is available to you if you guys have any questions or concerns, if you're being, um, folks are reaching out to you to get you to start to take a position on this, and you're uncomfortable or unclear about what your role is. He is available to you, and I can certainly arrange that conversation as you need it. So, it's going to be a big decision, um, when it comes time. So, um, you know, I would encourage you to keep an open mind and remain unbiased in this until we have a chance to present the project to you.
Okay, good.
Hey, hey, uh, I'm sorry, Jay, it's Ken.
Yeah.
You primed me up for two, uh, questions that I'd been wondering, and then someone came and asked me. Um, when the, when we initially, uh, when the Planning Commission first saw us, the Sage Ranch project, they were wondering if the, uh, the water use and, and the water availability had already been, uh, if, if that had already been, I know it's been thought about, but it, I, I don't know what the name of the approval is when you're going to put that many houses on our water system.
Sure.
It, has that, are, that study already been done?
It's been drafted. So, that was, the Water Supply Assessment, or WSA, was a component of the CEQA document. Um, I know you guys are all recipients of the CEQA document, so if you're curious, you can, can go to that document and delve in as far as you'd like to go. Um, we did receive comments, um, from several, um, uh, relevant folks about the WSA, and that's, uh, some of the items that our CEQA consultant are working on. So, um, yes, the issue has been considered. The water consump, the expected consumption has been quantified. It has been circulated for consideration. Um, and then there has been consideration about how they will mitigate that need. Um, that's in that water supply assessment, um, with some dra, draft language on mitigation measures. So, um, but ultimately, that's a component of what you guys make a recommendation on and what the council ultimately approves is, um, is you, you do. You, you guys have a responsibility to review the WSA and, and ultimately conclude that the analysis was fair and, um, and that the method by which they mitigate that water consumption is adequate. Um, and a reminder to you guys, you're not going to make this decision on this one. That one, this one's going to go to the council, but, um, but I'm sure they're going to value greatly you all's recommendations, so...
Yeah, no, and I, I, I guess, I understand it's in the, the CEQA document, but it's, um, understanding something of, of that nature, you know? It, that, I know engineers look at that and, and people that are far more educated than us. So, I, um, okay, I just, um, I, I, you know, I, I didn't remember seeing that sp, that part specifically, but that was my answer, was that I, to the person, was I believed it was in the CEQA document, and I believe it's public.
It, it is. It's available on our website, um, and I, we have a paper copy here in the office, although you'd have to schedule an appointment to come look at it, um, uh, because the front door's not open. But, um, uh, yeah, and as we get closer, I, you know, it's not appropriate for us to engage in a conversation about those details now, but, uh, certainly, um, when we agendize the meeting, um, and then in the meeting, we absolutely can spend as much time as you all like discussing that and, and, uh, uh, going into the details of how that, how that calculation works and, and how that mitigation lays out. So, if you're not, we'll have a good talk.
Okay, no, I appreciate it. I just, that's, that's the, I've had three people ask me about the water they're going to use, and I'm going, well, yeah, we see that, but I don't know that I fully understand how it works. So, I appreciate it.
Fair enough.
Uh, I, that, that brought up something when you were discussing that, uh, water element of the EIR. Um, I've skimmed over it, but I haven't gone through it with a fine-tooth comb because, uh, isn't it possible that the final document will be slightly different?
Uh, I actually think it's likely. Again, not to, to go too far into it. We received comments from a couple of relevant agencies on the topic of water. Um, and so, we're, um, endeavoring to address those comments. Um, and so, yeah, we likely will make a few tre, tweaks to the WSA. But I will say, uh, I, my, well, my judgment now is that largely the document, that the comments received don't, don't justify a major set of changes to the WSA. Maybe all the tweaks are there. Um, yeah, but there'll, there'll likely be some changing language.
Okay, and at the time that, uh, we, we meet to go over that EIR, will we be, is it possible for us to meet in person on that because it's so detailed?
Yeah, my personal feeling is, is that this project, that project is too large to do over the phone. There, it's just, um, uh, I mean, not, it's a, I mean, legally, under the State of California law, we could do a teleconference like this and approve a project of that nature. Um, but I think we all recognize that it is more difficult for the public to have their, their say, um, in, in this setting. So, it's my opinion as Director of this department that, that that project, uh, we're going to have to, uh, co, this COVID stuff's going to have to loosen up enough, uh, for us to meet in person in order for us to, to go through that, um, that agenda item. I, I actually think it's possible that, that, that in June, if we have a meeting in June, that the June meeting would be held in person. Um, you know, so I, I think this thing's going to probably pass. Um, you know, so I, I think this thing's going to probably pass before then, but, uh, but that's my, my opinion on it, uh, as of today.
Which thing will pass? The COVID thing or?
The COVID restrictions.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, I think that, that's just my, uh, let's not pontificate on the record. That's just my gut feeling is that, that COVID will be over enough, at least for us to, to meet in person, um, maybe even as early as next meeting.
Okay, because it's, it's, it's my firm belief, too, that, uh, we need to, as Kim was saying, it's not the same as meeting in person. And a project of this scope, I just really think we should, uh, be able to meet in person to discuss this.
Very good. Well, I'm glad to hear that. That's my opinion as well. Um, and I'm, I'm reasonably confident at this point that that's not going to end up being a problem, so.
Okay, good. And then my last comment was, uh, I again wanted to thank, uh, Kim for, uh, putting this staff report together, and, uh, hopefully at some point I'll get to meet her in the not-too-distant future.
Maybe next month.
Yeah. Okay, so that's the end of my comments. Um, did, uh, you have any reports or announcements to make, Jay?
Only briefly. Just, uh, wanted to give a little shout out to Cory and to Tori, uh, for these meetings. They've been handling both Planning Commission and Council since we've been dealing with this. And, and, uh, frankly, they do an awesome job getting it arranged and keeping everyone organized, and, um, so echo that. And then on the staff report, just wanted to, to, to give credit where it's due. Kim is, is, uh, essentially one hun, not essentially, she is one hundred percent responsible for the updated architecture on this project. Um, she came to me and suggested the changes and the change in color palette, to which I said, well, let's go talk to them. And, and she went and talked to them and, and got the changes, and, and I frankly just feel like it demonstrates that, um, that, uh, we are going to take another step up as a department in terms of the quality of development we see in this city. And just I wanted to give her a little, a little credit for, for doing that. So that's the end of my report.
Well, thank you.
Okay, well, I, I, I would like to, uh, uh, ask Kim to pass along to the applicant the next time she talks to him that, uh, we were all in favor of this. We like the architecture, and, uh, w- we're glad that they decided to locate in Tehachapi, and that'll bring more jobs here, and we really appreciate them, uh, coming into our community.
I'll pass that along. Thank you.
Okay, good. Any other comments from anyone before we adjourn? Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
Carol, first.
Okay, is there a sec-